Welcome to the climate change action plan. This is very important to the policy. This is again a very, very important issue. Who's going to say this? Jonny, do you want to? Jessica, do you want to make some comments? Please, and then we've got further questions.
Given the time, I'll try and be brief. And this is a report that you've seen much of at the last meeting. We put, as you will remember, the three-year climate change action plan for City Council through scrutiny in February. And that action plan set out what we were going to do for the period 2014, 15 to 2016, 17. At that point, we didn't have the carbon reduction figure for 2013, 14. We committed to come back to this committee as soon as we had those, so that you had the full picture. And this report gives you the 2013, 14 carbon CO2 reduction figures. And they show that we've made a reduction of 17% from our baseline figure by 2013, 14. There have been changes to the way that some of the numbers are calculated. We've tried to be as transparent as possible in this paper and have made those changes as a result of government advice about how we take into account various emission factors. And it's worth noting in paragraph 2.2 that that only accounts 0.3% of the reduction. So this isn't a large proportion of the 17% reduction that has been changed, but has been made by this carbon change, the way that the data is calculated. In paragraph 2.4 onwards, I describes the various reductions that have been made as a result during 2013, 14. A large proportion has come from emissions in our energy buildings, but a very significant proportion has been changes in our traffic signalling, and in particular the transfer to LED lighting from standard lighting. And you can see that some of these rather unsexy, unglamorous changes can make some really significant changes in carbon emissions that we have at the City Council. Our transport emissions have reduced with the exception of air travel and city car travel. As I've explained in the final report at the point of paragraph 2.4, where the air travel emissions have gone up, this is because of the way that the emissions data is calculated and it doesn't reflect an increase in air travel, in miles travelled by City Council staff or members. I think, however, that it's really important that we have that focus on it so that we can look to bring that figure down and keep a watchful eye, even though it is one of the smaller contributions to our CO2 emissions. Section 3, I'm not going to go through here, but it sets out very clearly the amendments to the emission factors that we've used, which contribute to that 0.3% change in our CO2 reductions. We've also, at the request of the committee, made some interim responses to our progress for 2014, 15. We didn't produce a full report against every action in the 2014 to 2017 action plan. This is three months into the plan. Into the plan, so we thought that giving you some indication of where we were going was a sensible thing to do, but not to try and refuse the full annual report nine months early. It seemed to us the right approach, I hope you'll agree. We've picked up in there some of the changes that we've made, but also identified at section 4.4 where some additional effort needs to go in or where we think we may be slightly off track from the plan. So under 4.4, we picked up carbon literacy. I know there's been a big push amongst members to become carbon literate. And we've had face-to-face training sessions. I know there was one immediately before this session. And we're getting more numbers through. And I think that the response that we're getting from members is that this is really good training and it's a really valuable resource to have at the council. We've also got more work to be doing around building retrofits, where we need to work with our council programmes team and our... to make sure that we have the right buildings in our retrofit programme and that we can make the best possible progress against that. We're working with Great Manchester Global Carbon Investment Director to ensure that we have the resources to retrofit buildings. There is also some work around schools' carbon reduction that we would like to put some extra focus in in the second half of this year. That's all that I want to say, but we can pick up any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jessica. I've got...
Thank you very much for your reports. And a couple of quick questions on 4.4 and my colleague's statement. 4.4, did you just mention there being a session directly before this meeting today? Right. I feel like this is deja vu for me. I'm having some problem in getting notified about when these training sessions are. And this isn't the first time I've always got ahead with no knowledge. I would very much like to take that one of these. My second point, I won't go too long on carbon literacy because I would love all 95 of us in the Labour group to get on with it. The next step section mentions a refresh plan for the period 2015, 16, 17, 18 will be brought to us in February 2015, which will include a review of progress. I seem to recall that a quarterly update was promised some months ago in this scrutiny committee. I'm not asking for a full report quarterly, but I believe a quarterly update was promised, or a brief report, and I would appreciate if anyone could look over our previous minutes and confirm that, and if so, I'd like that. Jessica, do you want to?
On the carbon literacy, I'm sorry, I'm not quite clear why that information hasn't come through to you. I know the council chaplain has been working very hard with members and dates have been circulated to members of the committee. So, and I know that lodge and members have come forward.
Can I say something about that?
Yeah, of course you can.
It's just that I've just been to that training along with Veronica. And I was notified this one because one that I wanted to go on earlier had been cancelled because of lack of table. And it was extremely useful, we should all be going. I think there was somebody at this committee last time I came who said that she'd just done the one before and that we should all go. And I was appalled to think that we've only got, was it nine? Nine to discuss with?
The number was actually, we've got 24 councillors before today's session who'd had face-to-face training. Not everyone's done the e-learning as well, but when they have, they're...
I'm coming on to that because the e-learning. One of the councillors that came today, Claire Mark, you will know her. Have you done this training yet?
I haven't, maybe. Because Mark advised me I need to do the e-training first, I hope he's...
Well, I haven't done the e-training because I can't get on to the e-training to do it because it presents all sorts of difficulties to me with my particular setup. And I was told very clearly in What's Gone True that you can do them either way round. So I thought I'll get on and do the stop for face-to-face. So there's no excuse now, Chair. And, but I do think it is difficult to access that e-line.
It is.
The e-line?
E-line.
Yeah, the thing on the computer to do it. And Mark said he tried to get on to it 20 times before he managed to actually do it this morning. And I think that we need to look at the technicalities around that because I simply can't seem to access it at all. Or the only place I think I could access it is if I came into the town hall. And I thought that this type of stuff was the thing that you could do, sitting in the comfort of your own house. Right, thank you Chair, that's what I wanted to say.
Not unprepared about that.
But it is worth doing.
That's really helpful and I'm really pleased too because we were advised that you had to do the online training before you did it face-to-face. So it was just a misunderstanding. And I'm not great on IT, so because I couldn't get on to it, I just thought it was me rather than the system. Jessica, who wants to say something?
We know that there have been some problems with the learning elements of it and that's why we've been very clear that you could do it either way round. So we've set up the system so that you can do it either way round so that members could have this training as quickly as possible and pick up with the e-learning. We've been working with Coola to try and sort out some of the technical glitches that there've been with the e-learning. It sounds like there are still some issues and I'll take those away and talk to our ICT department and Coola again to try and resolve that. I know that it's easiest to, within the council systems, I'm not quite sure why, but we will try and resolve that, it's going to happen.
Well, Daniel, do you want to come back on?
I had a second question.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll get that out. We do reports to the Environmental Strategy Programme Board, which is an officers group, and we committed to put those through on a quarterly basis, which has some figures in them. It's not going to be a full report, you know, I think that it has to be... Compiling the carbon emissions data is quite a complex technical issue which takes quite a lot of work in through it and has, you know, and will have bits in it throughout the years. So we try to pull that together in a way that is, and analyse it in a way that is most sensible for this group to be able to get their teeth into and to understand what actions we need to take to get on track, clearly, you know, we can provide you with what material we have throughout the year. But I would rather just make sure that we have a full report in February in this reporting cycle, as we suggested.
But that would conclude, I was doing quarterly updates as well, is that okay? Take what's on. Daniel, do you want to say something? There we go, we've got there. Thanks, Persim, and then there's Veronica.
Thank you. My question relates to the air miles, I've been called in. I don't fully understand how troubled, and yet you say there's been an induction in actual air mile. And do you hold any information regarding the destinations of these?
Let me pick up the first point. So we have raw data, which government gives us some formulas that we use to convert the information that we have into carbon emission, to tonnes of carbon. And the government refines that over time to try and give a clearer estimate of the carbon emissions of particular activities. On air travel, they've changed the way that this is done to take account of the fact that planes don't go direct from point to point, but often go a long route round to take more miles than as the plane flies direction, and also to take account of the impact of emissions in the atmosphere rather than, that they think are higher than had previously been calculated. So we've got some sort of conversion factors, if you like, which make that carbon, tonnes of carbon emissions higher than they were previously, even though we have done fewer miles by air travel. Now, some of these are still approximations in the conversion factors that government use, but we've taken the approach that we just apply the government emissions factors because that is the most standard baseline that we can use and it allows us to measure ourselves against other places. Jonny will be able to provide more information about what detailed data we have about routes and journeys and where those flights are to and from.
Yeah, we certainly do. We know exactly where officers and members have been travelling to and from through our corporate procurement systems. Indeed, it was something we interrogated in a fair bit of detail. I think at the meeting in Ableton Square last year, when we wanted to understand why emissions had gone up so significantly at the time because we were supporting an event with a number of artists from Africa whose travel we supported in coming over. So we can do that, I gave that as an example just to demonstrate the level of quiet time here and analysis. We can do where that's useful.
Frank, I'll take your question and allow me to speak.
So it's kind of coming especially going on to 4.5, relating to the air miles. And from what you're saying, I'm taking back that the air miles have gone up, but the calculation has changed, which is basically we were under-reporting the carbon when we were using the port. So now, if we have a lower increase, it's doubled, wouldn't you agree? Before, we were vastly under-reporting our carbon emissions by air travel.
We were reporting, we were converting our air miles into carbon emissions in the way that we had been...
Yeah, I'm not accusing you, that wasn't me.
So I wouldn't say that we were vastly under-reporting, but we were giving the numbers that related to the carbon emission factors we'd had.
But I don't, air transport has gone less.
It's gone down by 33%.
No, sorry, but I mean, if air transport itself has become less effective, I don't think it will have done. So it must have been down to the airport. But that side, my question is then is, do we have really robust steps in place or plans to make some steps to really reduce any air travel that anybody's made for the council? Because if we've gone so long and we're so far off, and this is such a big impact on our report in front of us, that surely we need now to look at how we can faster reduce that?
Clearly, air travel has gone down in the last year. And in fact, over, so in the last year, it has gone down by 33%. And we'll see that in the, I would imagine, if we would continue to see, even without a climate change impact, you'd see that trajectory continuing given the pressure on council budgets and the sort of trouble that's happening. However, we also ought to bear in mind the proportion of our carbon emissions which is from air travel, which is really a very small proportion of the carbon emissions in total. That's not to say that it's not an important number and one that we should bear down on or we should be looking at, but it is 141,000 tonnes of carbon, whereas our buildings produce 40 million tonnes of carbon. So, you know, we need to kind of keep some of the proportion there. That's not to say that we shouldn't be looking at that and it's not an important issue.
Emily?
Hi, thanks for the report. And I think it's very comprehensive, but I do, I have been made aware of a position that's been advertised that I think links into the report. And I just had a couple of questions about it. Basically, we've been, we've advertised for an external position to specifically look at kind of the green infrastructure, which is my understanding of it. It doesn't appear anywhere in the report. I wouldn't expect that we would be asked permission about it or anything. I was just wondering why that wasn't noted in the report? Why, whether that means that we have a skills gap in the council? You know, if there's anything that we could be doing to kind of support, making sure that we've got the right skills in-house to be kind of addressing those sorts of problems? That was my first question. And the second one was on carbon literacy training, which I've done. I have to say massively struggled with the online stuff, so it's not just any, you know, it really is very difficult to kind of get access to. But I was just wondering whether we could, whether there's anything kind of more, I guess, that we can do to support it and promote going on carbon literacy training? I know that the best place here is called Recruit a Friend. So I've managed to get my board colleagues to sign up for it and things like that. But if we can kind of be champions of it, yeah, if we can be champions of it in here, then I think we sound really chuffed of getting everybody to go through. It is brilliant and really worthwhile, I would say. But maybe more accessibility around the sessions or maybe doing a bigger group session might be something that we can begin to doing. So, yeah, that's it.
Can I pick up the first point which is about green and blue infrastructure? We have put out a group, we are developing a green and blue infrastructure strategy for the city, which has come through, has been the subject of discussion at this group earlier in the year. And we've put out a small commission to get some additional support to help us do that strategy and to help some expertise to supplement what we already have within the City Council. So it's not a permanent position within the council or anything like it. It's some additional support from the council agency to help us do that. So that's what that is. And these... The second point you made was around carbon literacy and I completely agree. You know, having people saying this is a good thing, carbon is great. We have tried to set up a number of larger sessions for members. I have to say, we've had some difficulty with members signing up and then not being able to come. And larger groups are better because you get more interaction and more engagement. But we have got quite a lot of sessions that we've had and it's really important when people sign up, we can go ahead with those sessions and then people come. But I really encourage you all to sign up with phones.
I would think that wanting to put further investment into developing talent and bringing further talent into the council and getting further support for our initiatives would be something that we'd be wanting to kind of shout about and put in our report. So that's all, that's kind of my point about it, is that if we are putting massive amounts of investment into it, we should be promoting that. We obviously take this incredibly seriously. And I think that that is something that should be, should be communed forward here. It should form a part, a central part of these things so that we can get a clearer picture. That's, you know, I actually think it's very important that we kind of promote that. And, yeah, on the carbon literacy training, you're right. But I would also just like to say it was very, very difficult to kind of complete. It was difficult to get, the sessions kept getting cancelled, even when there is a big will to do it. I would, I don't want to harp on about it, I had a lot of will to want to do it and it was still very difficult for me to get it done.
Daniel, do you want to follow?
Just to follow Claire Lee's point about the green and blue temporary commission base of work, we should be shouting about this level of investment. Could we confirm how much the investment is in this temporary commission base of work?
Jonny, who knows?
It's, we know how much the tenders value that. What I just need to check is whether that figures in the public domain. I don't want to prejudice any procurement process by sharing information here, but we can simply add that.
And Jessica, do you want, because it is a big issue for us. We've heard the comments already about, you know, I, for example, haven't done this training and I haven't done it because I'd not be able to do the online stuff first because that was the information given to us. And I was only at town hall this morning, could have done it, and I started doing advanced tests instead. My colleague, Mark Hackett and Mary and Veronica, they went off and did it because I had the wrong information. Now, that's probably my fault, but we just need to simplify the way that we get their message across in terms of, particularly people who work jobs and we've had quite a bit of traffic, email traffic around training and around the being flexible about it, particularly for people in work. So we do need, there are a great number of members of the council wanting to do it. You know, it's got to be timed to suit the work and if we can, and people with families as well. So they're the two areas we just need to put more effort into.
Thank you to the committee for those comments and that very helpful feedback around the carbon literacy. We've tried to set up sessions at a range of times of day, before meetings, after meetings, in the evening, different days of the week, throughout the summer period, before the summer period and after the summer period. It's quite difficult to, you know, clearly people have commitments to do all sorts of other things and I completely understand that. What we've done when we've had very low numbers on the courses, like one or two, is that we've gone back out to members who signed up to those courses and said that they want to carry on, very happy to provide that training, or do they want to sign on to another date, and here are some other dates that they can sign on to. And we've done that on a case-by-case basis as that's happened. And if that has broken down enough, it suggests that it might have done, then we will come back to you. But can I be absolutely clear that we have made the course so that you can do the face-to-face training before the online training? So that's...
It's just a factual point that whether a few numbers for that training course, I was not offered the chance to do that training course regardless of low numbers. I was told that that training course was cancelled. I have been trying to do that training course for some time. I am oddly enough at dates, I don't know what the communication problem is. It just strikes me that something as simple shouldn't be this complicated. I'm sorry to sound harsh, but I would like to just crack up and finish this because it's been an embarrassment to my article record. I don't like being a councillor who hasn't completed carbon literacy training. I would very grate my new award and if my constituents get a win with this, it's a win. But I'm really happy with that.
Fran, the last comment.
Can I just suggest?
Let me just bring Fran, Jessica, that I can use that.
It's a very, very good comment. I haven't done the carbon literacy training either, it's all I know. But aside from that, I think we're kind of got bogged down in this carbon literacy training. As councillors, I mean, I've done the training, but I also, without doing it, I already know that it's, you know, that we need to be aware of our carbon emissions as a council, as a city. And I think that, you know, further enough, it takes me five years to get the training done. I think we all need to still be reading the reports and raising it in our awards, you know, meetings, any opportunity that we get, and keeping an eye. I agree with Daniel that we have had a quarterly report. And I appreciate figures might have been released. I'm sure you did, I'm not accusing you of anything, but we do have come across, I haven't seen them, they might have been filed in a lot of the emails somewhere, but it's something that I really am passionate about keeping an eye on as a councillor. And I want to try and feel that in my time on council, I'm going to try and make a difference with this. And so I think carbon literacy training is solid. I'd like to see that and I'd like to see us all as councillors raising it as much as we can.
Jessica, do you want to come back?
Just to say that there's a full programme of reports on a whole range of subjects coming through this committee and through economies of scrutiny as well. So green and blue infrastructure strategy, food reports and the like are all going to be a programme over the course of the year. So there is a huge amount of work going on in this area and input that we need from the committee across a broad range of subjects. Okay, come to a specific point before you leave the room, Daniel, about your carbon literacy training. I've got somebody here in the room who can make sure that you're signed up to it.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, that's all. But to echo Fran's points about it not just being about carbon literacy training, I've been on the training, which is very good and I think as many people as possible should do it, but it's about constant monitoring of environmental issues. And I'm not sure we've got that quite right. I think this committee is very big, with a very big remit in terms of numbers and issues that needs discussing. I wonder whether we might need to take a look at whether something else needs to take on the form of environmental issues and who scrutinises that. But my main point is about section 2.1, which reports a 17% reduction in carbon emissions. I think any organisation which is making hundreds of billion pounds worth of cuts is going to reduce its CO2 emissions. So I'd quite like to know how much of this production is real progress and how much of it is just as a result of council doing less.
I think you made a very good point there. We've sought to try and isolate emissions precisely as you described in the past. It's quite difficult, I think it's probably the headline summary I'd give you. The one useful proxy that I could suggest might be of interest, which you'll see in the quarterly reports when we circulate, is CO2 per head of staff. It's a little bit of a blunt instrument, but it will give you a broad sense that we're becoming more and more carbon efficient as an authority as we downsize. So facts of interest, I happen to include those in the quarterly reports.
That's incredible. Come back, would there be any way also of having that CO2 emission pound spent as well on direct services?
Can we have a, can we have a think about that? Because clearly pound spent by the council is quite a broad range and it goes from everything from large capital programmes to revenue services. And it may be quite lumpy numbers that we're spending on in each year. So could we have a look at whether that's a sensible proxy or otherwise?
It's very sensitive. Mary?
I'd just like to come back on this carbon literacy training because as part of the training, what we do is we put some action plans out for the particular award that we represent. And I understand that this is all being put together in a large document. And the longer that we all take to do... And so the longer that we all take to do this, this training, the less of a sort of global action plan that we've got. So I think it is important that we all do it. That doesn't stop anybody commenting or getting information or all the rest of it in the meantime, but I would like to see something concrete coming out of that training, as well as the fact that we've all ticked the box which says that we've done the training. It is not simply a ticked off exercise.
Can we move on? We've mentioned.
Thank you, Chad. Everyone who's subscribed on knows I'll be doing the training next week for football already. Unless they can. I think I'll join me on it along, right? The point is that I'd like to know, in 2.4, we've got an 8% reduction in council buildings. Is any of that due to disposal of buildings, any of that 8%?
Yes, the term that our corporate property colleagues use is rationalisation, so it's a removal of those buildings from the estate, either through sale or demolition, it incorporates both of those things. It's important to recognise as well that that 8% also incorporates the impact of a very wild, mild winter, probably quite wild as well. I think what that does is it underlines how exposed we are to seasonal changes in temperature. What we noticed today is particularly cold. If this is the start of an early onset winter, what we will likely see, and I hope it's not, is that emissions may well peak this year as they have done in 2012, 13. I'm not making that point to be alarmist about whether the point is that we are exposed to seasonal changes in weather, and our emissions will follow those trends.
Thanks very much.
Can we have a breakdown, I don't want to get too complex, but could we have a breakdown of what percentage that would be for future reference, was due to disposal? Because those things will never be made again, won't they, for disposal?
And that, we, in the annual report, we were very clear about what we thought was going to be there as a result of rationalisation, what was about energy efficiency. So we did break that down in the annual report and we continue to do so.
Very good. Charlie, no, not back.
Simple question, really good question. 2.4, the City Car Club. Can you just, am I just reading this wrong? Are you saying that the car club emissions have gone up because more people are using it? But in line with that, they ended up using other things. Are we encouraging people to use the car club in terms of money, or are we trying to be in order to say people are using their own? What is there, what's rational?
It's, it has a couple of impacts. One is we're encouraging people to use City Car Club rather than their own vehicles and rather than taxis, and so, and where it makes sense financially, we're encouraging people to do that. It does also have a carbon saving because the efficiency of the fleet is high.
I was just wondering on street lights, obviously it's the second largest emitter of carbon, which is absolutely huge. I was wondering with reference to 4.31, how much you're expecting that to come down with the introduction of the LED lights and when that will start and when you expect it to finish as well?
The three-year climate change action plan that came to this committee in February sets out that they expect the LED replacement programme to save 8,400 tonnes of CO2, that equates to 12% of our baseline, so 12% of the 41% reduction. So significant, the most significant action. In terms of an exact date for when that programme will commence implementation, it's pending the outcome of some contractual discussions which are underway at the moment. As you'd probably expect, the undertaking the PFI that we have with the current contractor is a fairly complex process, one which both parties are bought in to resolve as soon as possible. I'm sure as soon as there's more detail on that, the, there'll be further information comes back to this committee.
Thanks for that. And next, Emily, thank you, next. Yes, you are.
But I was going to ask what Beth asked for the first part, so that's good. The second part was just going to be still on street lights, and it was just about checking whether any of the reduction that we're intending on is going to come from switching off street lights, and if it is, to make sure that some kind of risk assessment in terms of safety, both traffic safety and personal safety has been taken into account, just because I couldn't see if there was anything going down.
We clearly don't have that level of detail in this report. I understand street lighting has previously been to some meetings of this group in previous months, so we can, we can take another look at those reports to see if that issue is addressed. If not, it's something we can raise with our colleagues who work on that.
My expectation, though, is that the first three-year plan, that the vast majority of that comes from switching to LED lights.
Just to make it clear, we've no plans for this business to switch on street lights, have we? Because when you get a question like that at a public meeting, what happens is in Manchester evening news tomorrow, they'll be saying we're cutting off half the street lights in Manchester. So there's no plans to do that. Thank you.
Although one of our reports that we have earlier on, street lights, mainly the gate of new technology, I remember John, John's roommate, Ken, commented about it as an electrical engineer, and there was some photocell type technology that would actually dim the lights as the footfall declined on the street. And then as soon as you got footfall, it would come back on. But on traffic lights, I know there's one huge roundabout in my know of, 17 sets of traffic lights that were, say, throughout the night. Why don't we switch them off and there's nobody, they were put there too when there was a big factory, people being there. And it's a roundabout, and why do you need 17 sets of traffic lights at a roundabout on all night when the most you would need them is at wish hour? And could we look at that as well? Because that wasn't, Emily, as I recall in the last report that we got. There was a mention about new technology, which actually has not been installed, and it doesn't seem to be any plans to install it because of the cost. But it is a great idea and we should be doing it. And I know that there's some discussions around our contract price that another scrutiny committee needs to look at. Jessica, you want to say something?
On traffic lights, traffic signalling, that's an issue that TFGM leads on for Greater Manchester, so we can ask them whether they have plans to look at ways of further, making further carbon savings as a result of their traffic signalling.
Just, then as an organisation, to what extent do we as a city council have any direct contact with them? Because a member of the council made mention to me a couple of weeks ago that on one occasion they needed to speak to somebody about this issue, and it was almost impossible to get through to the providers of the service. Is there any, did they have that right? And if they did, do we have any plans to improve access for elected members?
I'm afraid I don't know who has direct contact with the BTC, which is the traffic signalling team, but if people want to get in touch with TFGM, my team has lots of contact with them and we can help them through.
Thank you. Thanks, Jessica. I think we've exhausted the debate on this one. We wouldn't have taken up the issue and we're looking forward to improvements in the training. It is important, it's not the old, but nevertheless, it's critically important. We all go through the carbon literacy training, me included. We need to be a bit more sharp as well about the figures about the cuts. I assumed that the cuts had, that they were built into the figures during the process of doing the statistical analysis. So it didn't dawn on me that they wouldn't be. If they're not, then it really places a very big difference on the figures. So we need to be clear about this thing being a straight line exercise, rather than the natural cuts that has taken place being part of, because that's a one-off saving that should be mentioned. But in terms of managing the process, we need to be much more savvy about how it is we do our calculations. So it's absolutely certain then. When you took out the figures around the airport, that was very understandable. We know about it and can follow it and track it. It's only that when we don't have this information, it makes it much more difficult for us to be absolutely certain about which set of figures we're talking about. So we should take that on board as well, we agreed, quite pleased. And I think the only other thing that we would want to do is endorse the recommendations in the report. Can we agree on that? Do you agree?